Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We're ready to get the council meeting started here. So we'll stand for the pledge by Scott, followed by the prayer by Cannon, please.
Heavenly Father, we just ask you be with us in the things that we say and do would be pleasing to you and beneficial to the citizens of Henry County. In Jesus' name, pray, amen.
Okay, we'll start off with the minutes. We have the regular session and the special session of minutes.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Both.
I'm sorry, did I hear a second? I'm sorry, thanks, Mike. So I have a motion in a second. Are there any discussions or any alterations?
Both.
Yes.
Yes, I said both at the end.
Oh, I couldn't hear you. I know, it's tough with everything going on in here, so. But yeah, so I have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimously. Okay, I do not see anyone here from the EDC or the chamber. So that moves us on to Lisa with the Recorder's Office. I'm sorry, I can barely hear you. So you're on the agenda for now, so.
Hi. I have approval for two part-time employees. I have not replaced one of those part-time employees because we just really don't need them in there at this point. Grace Holder is part-time. I would like to offer her full-time and leave it at that and not have another part-time person.
So how does that affect the budget?
I am currently paying for her hours, her wages from perpetuation fund. I would like it if the county can cover the benefits, but I can keep paying her wages.
So we're talking benefits and perf because with her current wages, she's not on perf. So it would be benefits and perf that would be affected, which I think our average on benefits is around eighteen, nineteen thousand, somewhere in that realm per employee. And then perf is eleven and a third or so of their salary. And their salary would be, what, what class would you put her at?
I don't know the answer to that.
They are like, isn't it two, I think it's two, comment two?
That is a pet.
It's at the thirty. It's right at forty thousand a year.
Somewhere in there.
Is this, has this position gone through Wagner?
Yeah, I have, there's other people in my office that have that position and she's working the position just in a part-time manner. But she's working thirty-two hours a week with us.
My comment is, would I do a study of the counties that of our size? This is the closest thing I have compared with. Our Recorder's Office has more full-time employees than any of the other seven counties that are in a population of forty to fifty thousand. And we just added one to full-time last year and we're gonna, we're gonna be cut monies this year. I would just be hesitant. And this is not personal. I would be really hesitant to add to payroll, anything. I'm one vote.
Well, all she's asked is for us to pay benefits. She's gonna pay payroll.
I understand. As I said, it is not personal, though it will be perceived.
This has nothing to do with Lisa's position, but I just want you guys to know what I gave Jason, what I've had to produce for Jason and Jody has for our comprehensive plan. They are going parcel by parcel. We gave them every single parcel. So I don't know, and this has nothing to do with you. I just, you're talking about money. To know that that's how this Senate bill's going to affect us, that we've had to go through every parcel to figure out what our losses are.
I guess I want to give everybody else a chance to talk before I talk, but yeah, I mean, I'm guessing the overall impact of the general fund would be somewhere in the twenty-two-ish, twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollar range would be my guess. So, but I'll let anyone else speak up for.
That's about what the benefits are-ish. Insurance and, and perf is, is-ish there.
So what's the benefit to your office for doing one phone instead of two-part?
First of all, I don't really have desk space for another part-time person right now. And we're, the group I have in there right now, we're all working really well together. So it just would make sense to me to eliminate that second part-time person and make her full-time. I, I do have the power, if you guys refuse to cover it. According to Indiana Recorder's Association, I can cover the full salary of one employee if I have to.
I guess my concern is, is we don't know what SB one, our Senate Enrolled Act one now is going to do to us. And we're supposed to get those numbers within the next couple of weeks.
So.
I would be much more apt to have a better educated answer once I see the actual impact. Because the, we, we're hearing so many things and we have no numbers.
So let me ask this, if I agree to cover her full-time salary and benefits for now, can I renegotiate that later?
Bring her to be effective immediately?
I was hoping July first, so she could help cover vacations and stuff, but.
So, so you're saying if you pay it, now you can renegotiate that at budget time and then potentially the county cover that.
At least the benefits.
At least the benefits starting in January.
If we're able to later down the road.
I think that's a good compromise. Me personally.
I mean, I would certainly feel more comfortable with that. But with no, obviously no promises, like we told Angela when she came here with some more discussions last month. I mean, we don't know what we don't know yet.
I've looked into it. I can afford to do it right now, but I don't know if I want to put that on my office permanently, forever and ever and always. So, because you don't know when our perpetuation fund budget's gonna change either.
That is not a guarantee.
So, yeah, so I don't want to say that we can do it forever, but we can do it for a year.
So Debbie.
And renegotiate.
How will that affect your, you're, you're in from the Auditor's Office? Will we have to create a special?
I'm already paying, I'm already paying it.
Well, I know, but as far as the perf and benefits, because we don't have that for a general fund employee.
It'll just come out the same line. She'll just appropriate for the salary and the benefits all out the same line.
So it won't be any additional.
Yeah, because she does that for this.
I don't pay benefits for any of them, but I pay salary.
Okay, yeah, it would just all came out, they'll all come out the same line.
Because I don't think we, anybody that's, I don't know that we have anyone that we don't pay the benefits for.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple we don't. For, we pay, Michael Mahoney pays part-time positions and stuff and we don't pay their benefits. And somebody else that comes out of a grant, I think that we don't, it might be Susan Lightfoot's and all of theirs comes out, yeah, it is. And all of their benefits come out of their grant. We pay a portion out of County General, a portion comes out of their grants and their benefits come out of that as well.
So I will make the motion to compromise with Lisa Lovelace that for now she pays it. We will renegotiate this at budget time to make the appropriate changes potentially, hopefully. Because I, I agree, the perpetuation fund is not a fund that needs to hold this forever. But we can renegotiate this at budget time. But for now, you pay the salary and benefits and renegotiate this at.
And she can, and that can be July first?
It's usually not until first of August.
July for.
Effective July first?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you're asking, effective July first?
Whenever you guys tell us to.
Okay, Debbie, did I make that motion correctly and coherent, more coherently than correctly?
I just don't want every recorder after me to be have to pay for an employee if, if we get to a point that we can't.
And I think it was last year when there was a discussion about paying for full-time. I don't agree with you having to pay for full-time people out of your perpetuation fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? I would only say that I recommend you go ahead and put it in the budget. And then that way it's at least a placeholder for a discussion when it comes time for your budget cycle session. And that way we can discuss it and, because obviously by that point, we'll have a much better idea of where we're at and where we're headed.
I think I need to just put a copy of the minutes where you've declined paying her full-time into my record so that I can say that's why I'm paying her. I need a copy of the minutes that says that the council declined. Yeah, yeah. And then, yeah, okay. I didn't know where they were at, just so that I can put them with my records that that's why I'm paying it.
Sure. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, passes unanimously. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, next on the agenda is park update. Park, Mr. Dine at Sheldon, did he speak on the park?
Good afternoon, everybody. Glad to see you again. Last time we met, a little old business here. You had some extra money for the park, the pond project. We did that. And we're just about finished. We got a little side delay yet, about two thousand square feet and that'll be done. We've got a path across the dam that's gonna be tore out and replaced and then that part of it's pretty much complete. So I think it was a very good project. Like I said, we took thirty-eight thousand cubic yards out of there. And that definitely improved the water quality. And people at least tell me that they, they like the looks of things. So that was a little old business. Now I come to you, I've heard the saying that small keys open big doors. And I'm the small key today. So in addition to that, also working on a project, I'm just calling it accent lighting around the six-and-a-half acre pond. The park board and I, we've reviewed this and I'm putting together numbers on it. And I understand that if there's any funding from this unit of government, it'd be by park board request. It wouldn't be to Sheldon Dines. But I wanted to inform you what I'm trying to do. I have a lighting engineer from Carmel that he does factories, he does schools. And he's donating his time. I told him that was part of the deal. I'm donating my time. There's no charge for any of that stuff. And he agreed to do it. He said he likes the park. He used to show horses out there. And so he would be the technical person for me because I'm not an electrical person. What the project would involve would be eight poles around the perimeter of the six-and-a-half acre pond. Each pole will have two lights attached to the top, LEDs, low energy, about eight to, or eighty to a hundred watts is all they use, like a big light bulb in your house. Very efficient. And what I like about this kind of project is you're gonna get a lot of bang for your buck. There's no charge for consulting. There's no charge for anything except installation. And Miss, Dave Detmer's the guy's name, you might know who it is. He'll write the technical part when we need to go out for requests for proposals. And of course, that would be reviewed with the park board. They would set it up and go through the legal part, make sure it's all legal. I have a budget estimate of that of thirty thousand dollars. It would be excellent place for people to walk after dusk at night. That's what they want to do nowadays. Baker Park's an example of that. People love it. And we want to make that a showplace. There's thousands of cars turn that to that road every day. And that kind of reflects what Henry County's about. It's Memorial Park. They've done an excellent job in the basement with the museum. If you haven't really looked at it, you need to go out there. So things are looking up. I wasn't involved with the park until I was asked if I wanted to be on the committee. So I'm still on the committee, I guess. But if there's, right now, we have about four thousand dollars committed to, which I said, I think thirty thousand should cover it, but we'd have to send out requests for proposals. But I need to get some more money in there before we do that. Don't want to hold up people until we get the money. The other thing I've got going is sponsors for the poles. There's eight poles. I've already got two people that'll sponsor them. Now, the only thing is, I said, I don't know how much it is yet. Because we have to get a little other money in there before we actually do that. But we would, the poles will be sixteen feet high, brown, bronze in color. And we would attach the little bronze or some kind of a little plaque to the poles. You know, it could be the Joel Harvey family or something like that. We'd be happy to do that. So, and I've had several people tell me that they would like, they would do that. But until I know if it's, is it fifteen hundred dollars, is it a thousand dollars, what do we need for pole sponsors? But it'll be somewhere in that range, I think. They're willing to do it. So if there's any funding, you can discuss this and if there's any way you can help get some seed money going here, I'm sure the park would appreciate it. The distance around that big lake is point four three miles in one lap. So people want to know when they want to get their steps in how far it is. So I had Angie up the GIS, run it down the center line, point four three miles. So about two and a half laps, you got a mile. I think it'd be an excellent project because it's a safe place for people to walk after dark. You have a ranger on duty part of the time. I think it'd really be a good attraction because that's what we need. They've done an excellent job with the shelter house. There's improvements being made. It's a tough thing to do. It, that park is, needs help. But it's, it's starting to shape up a little bit better, I think. So that's my pitch for the day. I think I mentioned to you before that there's also another project, but we haven't got very far with it in terms of what it might cost as a replica of a bridge, of a covered bridge would be an attraction on this same walkway area. In case, if I told you this, you can ignore it, but the first covered bridge constructed in the state of Indiana was in Henry County. But I didn't know it. Most people I asked don't know it. So Jim Ward, who a lot of you people know, has really got into the history of this thing. And I think he gone through the state archives somehow. He may have even come up with an old set of plans or a plan on how that bridge was built. It was eighteen thirty-four. So what we want to do eventually, and I'm not near there yet, but I'm working with him. I'm mostly working with him because he's the guru of this. We'd like to have a little replica of a covered bridge where the little concrete bridge is now between the north pond and the bigger pond for photographs, just, just a neat area. I've checked into the availability of old barn beams. There's people who've tore down little barns. They have lots of barn beams or we might have to just do it with solid white oak, but. So that's coming up. I don't know enough detail. We don't know enough detail yet to even come up with how much that might be. But that'll, that'll take a little more time. But I just wanted to bring it, bring you up to date. And let you know, we certainly appreciated the money to clean the pond out. And that amounted to about seven point six million gallons of extra water in that pond. So if somebody wants to get down like that, that's what it is. And if you have any questions that I can answer, I'll be happy to.
It does look nice. I drove out there.
Pardon me?
Said it does look very good. I drove out there the other day. The water is nice and I'm gonna say clear, although you can't see the bottom, but it's not bucky. It, it, it looks very good.
Well, it should be much better. There was six feet or more sediment down at the over, this, the overflow, the spillway. Over six feet of sediment there to get down to where the original valve was. And that's all, we, we took that all out around that thing to get rid of, so we could get the positive drainage when we were trying to drain the thing. So there's, it was just good to get rid of that sediment. I, I doubt if it was ever totally cleaned out. I don't know that, but I doubt if it was ever, I know it was kind of around the edges, but that's a lot of sediment. When you, three thousand tracks loads roughly. You want some concept of what we did there. But, but the thing I'd like to impress is you're gonna get a lot of bang for your buck because there's no consultants doing this. There's no fee for it. The people I work with, that's one of the things I tell them to start with. I'm working as a volunteer. And if you could maybe participate like that, we'd like to have your help. And so that kind of forced them into saying, are we gonna get an invoice for your help or are you just gonna help us? And Dave Detmer's been great. So it'll be professionally done and any, any assistance at this point or pretty soon would be appreciated.
Thank you, Sheldon. I, I know you tried to call me about four times when I was in nowhere land with absolutely no cell coverage. But I know you got ahold of somebody else during that, that interim, but if we had to pay for an engineer with your licensing and background, it would cost us tens of thousands. So we appreciate yours, Mr. Ward, everybody who's chipping in. I mean, right now, the park department spent thirty percent of their budget because they're not paying for a superintendent. So they have money, we have money. We're bringing in four hundred thousand dollars every six, every six months in food and beverage. So we'll wait for the park department to ask us what they need and then we'll talk from that.
Yeah, that, I know that's the right way to do it. And I'm not trying to get ahead of anybody or that just laying out what the project is and what, the park board, we've discussed this quite a number of times. And they're all, and everybody I talked to seems to be happy. They'd like to do this because I think accent lighting from dusk to dawn out there would really look neat. And just says another good thing about the park is that Memorial Park is a very unusual park. And we need to recognize that and try to, try to do something about it. And, and we've got a board there that's trying real hard. I have no problem working with any of them and I try not to be a problem. So.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and information.
So when he, I, I let you guys know, he's talking about the food and beverage money. Just let you guys know, the state legislators have pulled every single ordinance from nineteen eighty-seven to current. I have to send, I have sent them I don't know how many claims and everything. They're still questioning payments today. I'm not sure where this is going. I've heard a lot of things that, you know, if we're not spending it the way the legislators think we're supposed to, they're gonna to cut off our food and beverage. I don't know where it's going, but they have, I have had to produce, I don't know how many ordinances. I had to go back from eighty-seven to now. So I just want to let you guys know that on your food and beverage that legislators have pulled every last thing and they're looking at it and I don't know why.
Why, Senator Gaskell's son said it last year.
Well, I think they're trying to push it even further now. So I really do. So it's, it's gonna be tough. And I know as of now, because I had another request for food and beverage that are, even though we bring in a considerable amount, it's all been committed and, you know, I don't know that we'll have a very big balance come the end of the year.
So far, we're so good, but we do have to watch it very carefully.
Yeah, because we still haven't spent the money for the water project that's going up through the South Ninety. So that comes out, I think it's gonna.
Ready hasn't approved the project, so.
Yeah, Ready hasn't done it, but.
The longer we go into the year, I'm not so sure that it's going to get approved.
I think that's part of that state stuff too. They're really looking at all of this stuff, so it may not even happen. So I think there's a lot of questions, so. But I do appreciate your time and everything you're doing out there to help the park. It looks, it does look considerably better. Okay, next on the agenda is a request to transfer funds from the prosecutor. The prosecutor would like to transfer seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents from postage to office supplies.
I would make a motion to approve that transfer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So on these next, we have several TIF area allocation excess valuations that Debbie has provided to us. Joel, do we need to do these individually or do we collaboratively or? Okay, so maybe it would be best if we split them up by the areas that they're ran on. I guess that would be Middletown, Knightstown, Newcastle, and then the Henry County EDC. The RDC, I guess, the Henry County RDC. So, okay. So we'll start with the Middletown RDC TIF allocation access. We have the report from Middletown. Does anyone have any comments, questions, or take any action on, basically, we're just approving that we have received these reports. That's, that is the process here.
So, so we're, we're going, you're, you're gonna group in Middletown, Knightstown, Newcastle altogether?
No, I'm gonna do them separately.
You're gonna do them separately?
Each, each of the individual.
I, I didn't, I, I thought maybe, I, I misunderstood. I thought you were gonna group them into.
No, I think we'll do Middletown, then Knightstown, then Newcastle, and then we'll do the rest together since.
I got you. Okay, I understand. I'll make the motion to approve the reports for Middletown RDC TIF allocation area excess assessed value.
I'll second that move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next we'll look at the Knightstown RDC. Okay, next we'll look at the Knights Town RDC.
I'll make the motion to accept the same report for the Knights Town RDC TIF allocation area excess assessed value.
I'll second. Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion with the Knights Town RDC?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, next we have the Knights Town. Our Newcastle, I'm sorry. The Newcastle RDC allocation.
I'll make a motion to accept.
To accept.
Okay, we have a motion.
Jay seconded that.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion on the Newcastle? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next we will do the Henry County, which would be the I seventy quadrant, the State Road Three TIF allocation, the one the State Road seventy-one oh nine allocation, the County Road four hundred South allocation, and the industrial park allocation. And the three, I'm sorry, there are three additional. Yeah, the Hizzadar, the Rothrock, and the Housing Edition, which have no no allocations as of yet. So there's been no TIFs down to that area.
Okay, so you're doing the Northwest I seventy, I seventy State Road Three, I seventy State Road one oh nine, County Road four hundred South, Consolidated Industrial Park, Spice and Allocation Area, and then the three, the Hizzadar. I'm sorry, Rothrock.
So I was I was going to do Spice and separate.
You're going to do Spice and separate. Okay.
Well, no, Spice and can be added because it's actually Henry County. They don't have an RDC. That's true. That Spice and would go in with the Henry County.
Okay.
And then the three additionals, Hizzadar, the Housing Edition and Rothrock.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood which ones we were doing.
So we're going to do all of those.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve all of. I'm not going to list them all since we've already just went through them, but I make the motion to accept all of them.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Any discussions or questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, next, and we have the twenty twenty-four RDC report. So this is an annual report that the RDC puts out. It lists all the different bond obligations as well as the economic development TIF area allocation areas and spells them out on the amounts that are come in with that area.
I'll make the motion to accept the RDC twenty twenty-four report as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any further discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, we have the sheriff's contract for approval.
This is standard, isn't it? This looks familiar to what we've seen the last several years.
Yes, this is an annual contract that we do every year. The auditor did bring up a question because, you know, as a timing thing, and maybe we need to look at this earlier next. Because I know there's been some issues with that in the past, but this is the time we've gotten it. So I know there I don't. I did not see any changes. I was not here last year. There's few that were. I know that I spoke to some that have seen it and don't don't see any changes either. There were no increases this year and the the sheriff salary is based on the salaries of others. So, you know, it's it's set by the state. It's one of the few salaries that are set by the state with the county level. So there's, you know, and and as far as the rest of the verbiage goes in here, it seems identical to those we passed that have been passed by this body in the past.
I make a motion. We accept an authorized contract. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or additional discussion?
The only question I have, you brought up the timing. Is there a a good time or a fiscal year that is preferred? I don't know. Is that something that can be maybe rectified if? Is it a problem? I don't know. Oh. They brought it up.
I think if I'm and I was not sitting on the council last year, but if I remember correctly from the cheap seats out there that they had to make some changes because the contract didn't get approved until later in the year, but it technically ran from January. Last year, there was a pay increase, so there was like some back pay situation that had to occur. And so this contract would be much better served getting in front of us in December instead of January, just as a note.
Look at looking on page four, it says in this one, it says the term of this agreement shall run from January first twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, but then it talks about if there's a a pay adjustment in June because June, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, June or July is when the prosecutors pay potentially is adjusted.
Correct, yeah, because it's tied to the state fiscal year, so.
So but but I agree. I think we should be having this contract before the first of the next year.
If if let's say that changes mid-year, then we could always file an addendum to this contract, correct?
Actually, the agreement provides the salary adjust with any prosecutor's.
So once we approve it, it's just an automatic.
Yeah, it would just automatically adjust.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, you might take that back to John to, you know, better. We do these in December in the future, just so that way we got it covered and we don't get into that mess of a back payment situation.
State Board of Counsel doesn't like approving it in June, a contract that was supposed to start in January.
Yeah, since we run a calendar year, then that with our pay, that would probably that would be much better for us. Now, we would probably have to do an additional appropriation to that.
To do the adjustment.
Prosecutors aren't getting an increase, no state officials.
Well, I know, but I mean, if if we did have to change it mid-year, we would still have to vote on an additional appropriation to that fund from the general fund, but not any kind of anything on the actual contract itself. Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next on the list, we have the statements of personal property that we need to accept from the Boarshead. These are all the Boarshead locations.
They seem to meet all the criteria that they specified from the get-go, and every year seems to meet or exceed. I have no issue with everything that they presented.
I absolutely agree. Every year that I've ever seen these boars had far exceeds their initial estimates and has been a phenomenal community partner.
Having said that, if there's nothing else, I would make a motion to approve those collectively.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the last item on the agenda that I have here is the discussion of our July through October meetings. But then, you know, at least that long. You know, obviously, we see the condition of the courthouse right now. This whole floor is going to be shut down for extended period of time. The auditor's office has been moved out to this building downstairs on the first floor and across the street. At the Justice Center to make room for everybody. You know, right now, the proposed location is the Sheriff's Department. They have a large conference room area that Debbie is working through to schedule our meetings out there. So and then we also need to discuss if everyone feels that's an appropriate location for the proposed budget sessions that will be coming up because that will fall in this timeframe. Late July, early August is our normal budget sessions for Henry County Council.
If it's set up for live stream, it seems to be a good place. Any place that's set up for live stream that's accommodate us and.
It is set up for live stream.
General public, and that seems to meet the criteria. I'm not sure nine one one room is.
We just need to come up with dates so that we can confirm them with Ann. When you guys soon as you guys can kind of come up with some dates so we can confirm with Ann that those are okay before we set them.
Like budget hearings. Which I know for the last five years have been the first two weeks of August.
Yeah, I I mean, from what I remember, it seemed to be like a Tuesday, Thursday, four days, two weeks. Last week of August, first week of July is that.
In a fifth, if needed, and this year may be needed.
Let's hope. Do we want to go ahead and attempt to set those dates at this meeting or? Do we want to hold off?
I think we kind of wait till July so we know more from Baker Tilly and and everybody because we can't. Unless we gather more information, we don't know what we're working with yet. So I think it would be premature to my that's my personal opinion. I mean, obviously, I'm only one one person, but my personal opinion is to set it now. It's going to be a little premature because we don't know when they're going to have all their numbers done for us to really know where to go.
And and I feel the same way. I've said this. I said it earlier to Lisa. It's hard to know what we don't know. And right now, I know they're working diligently, but I also know that even though they voted and everything's on paper. You talk to two different people at the State House. They don't agree what's on paper. So there's still a lot of information that needs to be gone through, so it could be very interesting. All of that being said, we also have crunches that we have to have if we want to make any changes to the LITS. I believe that we only have till the end of July. Is that correct to to get the tax council together?
That's the same.
So. Well, I'm afraid we may have to argue the later because of the what happened at the State House, and I can't imagine we don't have some good footing to argue with on that. So, I mean, how about our regular meetings? Does anybody see an issue with just continuing our regular scheduled meetings as they are set?
So July ninth, the second Wednesday, four thirty.
Yeah, and then at that time, hopefully, we'll have a better understanding from Baker Tilly. And others that we're looking at to to have some numbers. I mean, Jason had initially hoped that he would have it to us by now, but it's it's a it's a lot. It's a lot to try. Like Debbie said, it's not. This is something they haven't done. Did they even do this when they instituted the tax caps? Go parcel by parcel. This is something that I've never heard of that we're having to do to figure our actual revenue. So it's it's a massive undertaking and some of the initial when I was with a Baker Tilly employee a few weeks ago, he was saying some of the initial numbers were coming back way different than anticipated in the bad side, not for the good. So.
I think you all received this from DLGF. They're starting to wade through, and there's twenty pages of of their interpretation of how to decipher Senate, mostly Senate Bill One. It's very complicated. It would take someone like Joel to explain to us what some of this means because I don't think some of the legislators know what this means. But we know the impact's going to be negative.
Yeah, I mean, I've had it. I've had legislators that have told me they didn't realize the impact was going to be what it was when because it wasn't what they were told. So I think we have to be very cautious and move forward very, very cautiously on our funds. We have the council has done a very, very good job of building up a reserve. But that could disappear quickly if we have a major issue come up. So we have to be very cautious and very diligent with the taxpayer dollars right now. So I think from what I'm seeing is everybody, most people are kind of of the mindset that we hold off on the budgets, but the regular meetings are okay as scheduled. Does anybody have any?
Oh, yeah, I don't have a problem being out the sheriff's office for budget meetings. I just don't know when we need to set them.
I think that's most ideal spot because it has the technology that we're going to be required to have come July. And obviously, I mean, we have other spots, but the the park was one that I thought of, but we don't have the streaming capability at the park, and we're going to be required to stream those budget sessions and all that as well. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Josh. Don't you guys have a cube microphone? At least one cube microphone that you can toss around? So that might help with the sound. Yeah, no, it is. It's actually a cube microphone that you can. Yeah, uh huh. Yep, toss to people.
Okay.
I'd make a motion for the sake of scheduling for the sheriff's office that we hold our regular monthly meetings on the second Wednesday at four thirty at the sheriff's meeting room.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I I'd also add to that that we go ahead and schedule for the sake of scheduling the work sessions that we might have. One monthly. That way they're already on the schedule, and we can always cancel those out. That way we're we're not in competition for the use of that room.
We had said previously in this subject to change the fourth Thursday. And I don't remember if it was four thirty. But we we'd done that last year because we had met on fourth Thursdays for years. And so we decided to fourth Thursdays would be a good time because we were used to that for.
I would suggest making those tentative dates before you vote on them so that I can get with Ann on the schedule.
If available. That would be our preferred if the rest of the council would do that. Would be in favor of that.
I I know for June, I definitely could not do the fourth Thursday. I have conflict that day.
Probably be but the June one will probably be with Baker Tilly when they get back with us.
Yeah, and that's that's what I'm thinking. I think we need to wait until Baker till. I mean, and then to set a work session in at the end of July, when we're going to start our budget session at the same time, I think that might it might be better to see what we've got on the ninth and then set one for maybe that following week to really get into the numbers. And and that way we'll have some prep done before the budget session. That that's kind of my thought. I mean, we could set a tentative date for July, but I would assume if we're going to stick to that normal schedule, that fourth Thursday of July would be the twenty-fourth. Well, we probably would start that next week. I mean. Chad, I think we just really need to wait to schedule anything for budget. I think or for a work session. I mean, I think we should think of what Debbie has to say, too, so include her in the decisions.
My concern is the schedule, so and it's your guys' decision. My concern is we need to get on the counter because they do a lot of trainings out there. They have people in there, so we you might have to move around, but it's your decision. If you want to wait, we can wait. I don't. I mean, it doesn't matter when or another.
I will say, Chad, we're one of the earliest counties to have budget hearings. An awful lot of other counties I confer with on the councils at the state level, they don't start until the last half of August, and a lot of them focus in September, starting after Labor Day. We are on the earlier side of that, and this year especially, we may need to think about moving that back with all the changes, but.
We are. We are early, but we're strategically early because to try to wait late, then we're on the rush game. Because if we have to make changes, we have to do things, then we're rushing. The auditor's office is scrambling because we have to have everything in by October first, right? Is it October?
Yeah, and we're probably one of the counties that have the most sessions. Most counties only do a day and a half, two days. Most of them, that's almost all of your counties do, so they can wait a little bit later.
Yeah, and so I think we do things a little different, but we also don't want to wait till the last minute in case we have. I mean, I would rather give us a cushion, if you will, in my in my. I just think that's that's probably safer than trying to rush everything at the end, and then these guys are spending thirty hours a day in here to try to figure out how to get it pushed through the the DLGF. So leading leaving of that, do we want to set something tentatively for that week of the twenty-first? So, leading, leaving of that, um do we want to set something tentatively for that week of the twenty first of? And I know that's the Summer Auditors Conference, because I'm looking at it, so the Auditor's Office is gonna, yeah, that's the week of the Auditor's Conference. So we would probably have to look at potential July, yes, July twenty first. So I mean, we could potentially set something for the afternoon of, the Monday afternoon or Thursday afternoon of which, of that week, the twenty first, the week of the twenty first. Because the Auditor's Office will be gone on the Tuesday, Wednesday that week at their conference in Indianapolis. And honestly, I'm scheduled to be down there for work too, so. I mean, we could tentatively set something for, do you have the schedule from Ann that gives what's currently on the scandal? We could tentatively set something for four thirty on Thursday, the twenty fourth of July. Does that work for everyone's schedule?
It works for mine. Yeah, you're retired.
I mean, Shannon is not here. I'll have to check with Shannon, but.
Yeah, mine's good.
Um do they have, can we potentially zoom in if we need to for different things out there, Josh? Do you?
They do have Zoom, yes.
They do have that capability, okay. So we could potentially even do that if need be. But that, that should give you plenty of time to have the budget books ready to, Deb, by then. Okay. Okay, so do I hear anybody that would like to make a motion to tentatively set a meeting for that timeframe?
I'll second, if somebody first did.
No one did. You can be first.
I'll make a motion, four thirty on July twenty fourth. For a session.
I'll second.
For a tentative.
Tentative work session.
Tentative work session. Okay, and then Debbie, you can just send us an email and let us know if that works in Ann's calendar? And then if not, we can try to come up with another date. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign, alright, we're passed. Four thirty on July twenty fourth.
Can I make another suggestion about your budgets? It's gonna be hard for department heads to get out there to talk to you guys. So I think this year it's gonna be more important for the liaisons to talk to the departments about their budget, because it really is gonna be hard for a lot of them to get out there to come and talk to you guys like they usually do. So you might, just a suggestion that you might try and talk to your departments to, about their budgets.
You beat me to the punch, Debbie. I was gonna ask everybody to go and, you know, it's because of the construction, because of everything going on, you know.
We could also utilize the Zoom and let the department heads also zoom in if they can't. But I agree, we need to, the liaisons need to work with with their departments, but maybe some of the departments could just zoom in as well.
Because I do know that these four-day work sessions were not always a thing in Henry County either. It used to be just a couple days. And um some of the more, I don't want to say, I don't know what the right term is, the simpler maybe budgets, like the Auditor's Office, Recorder's Office, the Treasurer's Office, and some of those that don't have as many moving parts, didn't spend as much time going through things, because in those budgets, all they have is people and paper, and so there's not a lot to them. So, um but yeah, I mean, if you can, please, and if you need any help with that, I'm always happy to help. And anyone's happy to help, reach out to your fellow council members. If you can't get time to meet with some of your liaisons, we're always here to help each other and support each other, so. But definitely be meeting with your, with your liaison appointments. So, do we have anything additionally from the council?
No, I'm, I was pointing to Jeff just.
Alright, well, that, next, any, any, anything at all from the council?
Just a reminder of our state called, State Board of Accounts called council meeting on Saturday, the twenty first.
Yep, that is next week from this Saturday. So um if you, you can go onto the IIC and register. So if you would like to go, I strongly recommend it. I think it'll be imperative, especially this year. I know I'm already scheduled to be down there. I'm not sure who else is. Bobby is, Shannon is, so it, I'm, I'm going down on Friday just to.
Class Friday, yeah. Whatever the, I don't remember what the class was on Friday, but I signed up for that as well.
So, yeah, if you can, please make that. I think it'll be very important this year with all those changes. The IIC has done a phenomenal job of trying to stay on top of all of this. Um and I know that several of us went to meetings with the district meetings, and and Ryan and David did a great job of going through it. And I'm guessing the next meeting next week will have a lot of additional details that have come out of the woodwork since, so. Strongly recommend everyone trying to make it. Okay, anything else from up here? If not, anything from out there? Jeff?
For the Henry County firefighters, when do we plan on having a tax council meeting for the lit money?
As of right now, that has not been set. Um there's still several questions coming out of the Lits from, and the way that this affects the, from the the Senate Enrolled Act one. And we're trying to get our understanding and head wrapped around this, and that's what I told Joel this year, we may have to press that August first point a little bit. But um I would anticipate that sometime next month, once we have those numbers, we're gonna have to sit down with the tax council. Okay. I mean, I don't have an exact date as of now, but it, I think we have to notify that. How many days in advance on that notice? Is it? I was gonna say it's ten days, so it'll be, I'm anticipating sometime in the month of July, we'll more than likely have to get together.
There are several asking that's why.
Yeah, we still, there's still so many moving parts.
House Bill fourteen twenty seven's messing with us too, so.
It is.
You know.
Yeah, there's several. It's not, I mean, Senate Bill one is the knockout punch, but there's several blows that got landed to us all this year, so. But I appreciate you staying on top of it. You've done a great job in circling your your wagons around your team there, so I appreciate that. Anything else? Anybody else have anything? I know that you're gonna be interested in that as well from your perspective. So, yeah, we've got a, we've, we definitely will be coming up with a tax council meeting in the next month. Yeah, that's what's and and what Shannon's understanding and my understanding and some others' understanding, we all have different opinions, and that's the problem on this thing. No one really, and 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 now we have the DLGF ruling, which is actually different in several areas. It it's so subjective when you read these things. They're not as black and white as you would hope they would be. And so there's, it's a lot of interpretation on some of these bills, so. As we found out, that's why we had the issue with the fire department. I mean, our interpretation was different than their interpretation, and we could all sit here and arm wrestle all day who was right, but they won. So, okay, anything additional?
I have a little bit of trivia. On this date in uh June twenty, or June eleventh nineteen twenty, Memorial Park was founded as a living memorial today.
That is correct. So happy birthday, Memorial Park. A hundred and five, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five years. A hundred and five, that's right. I was gonna say, I thought you'd say a hundred and five, and you corrected me. And and I just took your word for it. Happy birthday, Memorial Park. It coincides with my late father's birthday, so happy birthday, Memorial Park, and happy birthday in heaven to my dad.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I should adjourn. Alright, thank you, everybody, for your time. Appreciate it.